United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, one God, universal, for the greater good and justice for all.
I will pray that with your help in heaven, dear Lord God, it is once again that we humbly come before your throne of grace to thank you for your son, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, and for all of your many blessings bestowed upon the city of Dillon, lest that you continuously bless our mayor, pro tem, city council, city manager, our city attorney, and the department heads on tonight as we gather together to make the decisions for the betterment of all the citizens of Dillon. And in everything we do, we pray we be careful to give your name the glory, your name the honor, and your name the praise. But it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
All right. I've got to get an approval of the agenda to include an executive session to discuss first bank lease agreement and land purchase. I'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Uh huh.
You got that?
Yeah.
Everybody ready?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Okay, approval of the minutes, regular meeting of January thirteenth. I'll make the motion.
Second?
All those in favor?
Uh huh.
All right. I've got a few things. Been kind of busy the last few weeks. Tended the Chamber of Commerce banquet the other night. Very nice, surprising crowd for the weather that we had, but it was very nice. And of course, the Dillon County Economic Summit. A lot of things going on in Dillon County, a lot of excitement with the inland port and the energy around that. I mentioned some things. I got asked to say a few things, and I felt like it was kind of, you need to get up there and talk about the state of Dillon. And I got there and it said, "Welcome." I was to welcome everybody. I said, "Well, I hadn't prepared that." And James Blockman had already done it. Anyway, I kind of listed a few things, challenges that we're going to have in Dillon that, the way I see it, we've mentioned them here before, that, you know, we can have tremendous economic development in Dillon, but if we don't have any place for people to live and move here, then what are we really accomplished? If we don't improve our quality of life or increase our population, then what do we get out of industrial development? Very little. So I look at it as part of our job as a city and as leaders, that we need to promote that development. And I think we do a good job with the resources that we have, given a good quality of life. I did not, because of that Friday night, I wasn't able to get to the father-daughter banquet. I heard it was a tremendous success. I know that my grandchildren had a huge time. If you want to see energy in a small town, you ride by that little wellness center on any given weeknight and see all the cars out there watching Little League basketball, and it's a lot of fun. Also had an opportunity to speak with the downtown development since, that was a week or so ago, and I know many of y'all will be, and I hope that...
She's out.
She's still out.
She's out there.
I thought we were talking, and I saw...
I guess they were calling all day.
But, you know, I'm really anxious to see what they have to show us. Long-term, though, is I see regulations and demands on what we need to do with our water and sewage. I think that it's going to be difficult for a population of eighty-five hundred to maintain a sewage treatment plant facility. I think we need to grow that in the way we grow it. We've got tremendous opportunity with the inland port and these opportunity zones, which is right out that sector, to put another sewage treatment plant out west side of I-95 and hopefully do some residential development as well as industrial development. So I look forward to their planning, and I'm not sure that they'll hear that, but we, as a group, need to look into that. Also, I think there's some excitement with the, coming out of your comment about how we need to do more to try to improve the wellness center. I've talked with Jess and a few of the people that have been involved with that committee, and they're pretty excited. Did we find out anything on the Silver Sneaker?
Still waiting to hear back. I reached out to Congressman Rice's office, and they're going to see what they can find out for. We've applied, just haven't got the response.
I don't see any reason why, if anybody gets it, why we wouldn't get it. Also, the storm drains, we had four inches of water Thursday night, pretty quick. And I understand that we, a lot of places that we identified and focused on, we had no problem with standing water. And I understand we did have, Main Street had water and Hampton Street. And I talked with Bert earlier today, and there's a pipe there, about forty-foot a pipe, that we're going to replace that may do a lot in correcting that. When we did that study about twenty-five, about twenty years ago, they said it was a, they said at that time it was about a $20 million fix. I'm not sure that they went underground and camera'd our stuff. And I think that what we're doing with the cameras and the clean outs, and that they're just soaking up with roots and things, that if we fix those, I think we can get this drainage thing straightened out. And Bert's team works hard on it. And identifying that, those beeper dams, I think that was huge. Excited that we won't have major stuff in order to fix our flooding issues. But that's about me. Glenn?
I'm going to follow up back to Wellness Center, which that was a discussion last month and the previous month, on revenue, generating revenue, keeping revenue over the past year and a half, two years, compared to where we are now. Went back and looked, January of 2018, we had 515 members that paid during that time. January of this year, well, actually, let me correct that, from January 2nd to yesterday, we had 446 members who were approved, checked in during that timeframe. I went and met with different people on different occasions at the Wellness Center to ask them some things, as I would see. And one of the things that was brought up last month, I believe it was, was about automatic drafts. Most of the folks I talked to are not interested in automatic drafts. That's one of the reasons they didn't go to the new facility and/or that's one of the reasons they have left the new facility, is due to the automatic draft. We put in place, as I mentioned last month, 1st of January, the extended hours. After five weeks, just looking at the extended hours, really hasn't been a benefit as far as people utilizing it. Actually, less than 1% of the folks coming in after the times that we had established over the past 12 years, only 1% are utilizing that extra...
Most of that is night?
Yeah, yeah. We went from eight-thirty to ten o'clock on a weeknight, and five o'clock to eight o'clock on Saturday and Sunday.
About six weeks.
We've done it five weeks, and we're going to, you know, I feel like we'll do it for the rest of the month, just to see. Now, that same time last week, we generated 15 new members. So that was a good thing to see. But we're going to continue with the extended hours through February. Then there was discussion about maybe getting a little committee together, some members out there to get some feedback, which I got ahold of about six or seven people that I know that worked out a good bit and utilized the facility. I've met with them twice since mid-January. And the comments that they've given me so far are that our rates are good, because we talked about rates, do we need to look at our rates? They all felt like the rates were good. They feel like our amenities are good. The only negative they had was the weight machines, pretty much what we got from the hospital thirteen, fourteen years ago. They think some of those things need to be replaced. And we're looking at some of those projects and see what those costs are. We'll bring those back here at our next council meeting. Hopefully, we'll have that done. We're going to meet with a rep at the end of this month to give us some ideas on some of those things. And some of these same folks that I've talked with gave me some information freely from when they went to the other facility, and some of them doing both, as a matter of fact. Most that I've met with use that the new facility was something new, that was the reason they went. One of the reasons they left was the automatic drafting system, lack of space, has no showers, cleanliness, it wasn't very clean, they had no towels, and probably the biggest argument or the biggest complaint they had, they had no water fountain. So if you want to either beverage or drink water, you either bring your own water and/or buy theirs that they have, but no water fountain per se. As I mentioned, we gained 15 new members last week, and then getting feedback, as I mentioned there. So we're going forward on trying to see what we can do to grab some more members. Again, January 2018, we had 515 members. As of January, or as of February 9th, we had 446. So we're not much off. Now, January of last year, we were into 300 mark. So there's a big difference there, but we're going to move forward with that. Second thing I have on my item that I mentioned in your list, Sunday alcohol sales. As I sit back and I look and read and talk to different people and see what's happening around us, we're the only county, and I'm doing it county because that's what I'm comparing to, we're the only county in the PD that does not have Sunday alcohol sales. Now, I'm going to be the first to say, it was my daddy used to say, "Just because somebody else does it, doesn't mean you have to do it." However, I also believe that without Sunday alcohol sales, we're not going to recruit restaurants or hotels, and maybe some retail. You know, we've got no restaurant per se downtown, other than King's, which they sell alcohol Monday through Saturday. Don't know that he would be interested in selling alcohol on Sunday. But we've got a restaurant that's opening hopefully here in the next three weeks, four weeks, that will sell alcohol. I imagine they would probably like to do it on Sunday as well. We've got another one that's possibly going to be starting construction hopefully in the next six months that would like to sell alcohol. Who knows, Kentar House may come back if there's those opportunities. But at the same time, not just downtown, you know, we have other areas in town that can track restaurants, whether it's Highway 34, or Rafford Boulevard, or 301. You know, one I could get about, and I think this is what I was told, Del Sol, they lose a lot of business on Sunday, as I was told, because of alcohol sales.
The margin on food is about 12, 15% in a great situation, and that goes to about 25, 30% if you get alcohol.
But I think we're missing the boat by not doing something or trying to do something to make that happen. Again, Marion Marlboro County just passed it here in the last year, two years. Florence County has it, Lumberton has it, Darlington County has it. I just think it's something that we may be missing the boat. And it's okay if we don't want to do it, but we don't need to sit here and say, "Why can't we get something?" Because that may be a reason, there may be others, but that may be a reason as well. So if you'd like, I'd like to come back next month with an ordinance to present it. And it's an ordinance not allowing Sunday alcohol sales. It's an ordinance that's requesting it to be put on the referendum in November in the general election, because the public has to vote on this. And in this case, it would only be those registered voters in the city that vote during November during the general election. But it has to pass two readings of ordinances. I believe it has to go before the Justice Department, before it can get on the referendum. And then if that's approved there, we turn it over to the County Election Commission. They then get it placed on the referendum, and whatever that cost to place it on the referendum, and I don't know what that cost would be, I guess printing cost, things of that nature, we have to pay for that, which I don't think is long money. And we need to do that sometime by the summer, so it'd be in time enough to get on the ballot in November for the public to vote it up or down. If they vote yes, we then contact the Department of Revenue and say, "This is passed." And then they start working on getting the permits to allow these folks to do it. So if you're interested, I will bring something back. And if I don't hear any response back, I'm assuming you're interested.
Can you reach out to the county? The county said they didn't want to?
I spoke to a little bit. They, right now, don't want, they don't want to see what happens, I guess. And I won't put them on the spot, but, you know.
All right. So can we do it and they do it?
Yes, 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 yes. We can do it within the city. However, it has to be done during a general election.
Okay.
But I heard you clearly say, you said Marion County and Marlboro County have passed.
Yep.
Go.
Absolutely. Now, this would be what is known as on-site premise consumption, which would be restaurants, and off-site premise, which would mean you could buy a grocery store, convenience store, whatever. And we all know that's happening today anyway. I think that it will provide us an avenue of possibly attracting a hotel. Again, you know, people want that, and whether you drink the spirits or not, that is everyone's individual choice. But I believe it's something we need to move forward with.
And then let the public decide in November?
That's all, excuse me. That's all I have at this point.
Okay. Finance?
In general fund, our total cash accounts, a million, 202,268 dollars. Our revenues for 20 versus 2019, we are 105,827 dollars more in revenues in 20 than we were in 19 this year. Our expenses, we are 96,268,000 dollars more in expenses in 2019 than we were in 20.
But those were budgeted expenses, is that correct? I mean, what I'm saying is, is that we, you know, obviously we've had this over our expenses, but those were budgeted expenses?
Did everything...
Are they over budgeted?
No, that's out there.
We're not 96,000 dollars over budget.
No, no, no.
We have 96,000 increase in our expenses, but those are all about...
Compared, I'm only comparing year to year. I'm not doing, that's correct.
Well, in this case, month to month, only year to year.
Yeah, but I think year to year goes on there.
You know, and I hate to add another layer to this, but it may be, and you can go through and generate that information, but for me, you know, and I'm glad I've got 105,000, 106,000 more in revenues, but did I budget for 250,000 at this point in the, do you understand what I'm saying?
Well, see, that could be the timing of the local option money coming in, or taxes coming in, in both fiscal years, as when they hit. So that has a lot to play into that.
Now, with the property tax issue there, I understand what Dr. Wallace is saying. At what point, since we're at January 31st and the fifth thing's already passed, when do we give a bigger block of money? When does it come in?
What is basically left is our rollback, I call it our rollback money, the state money.
When do we actually get our rollback?
We get that monthly. That comes in monthly.
Every month.
And see, what you do is, when you're ordering...
So for property tax, we've already got it.
Right, right. Basically, we've got...
And then the liquid tax, from that point on, we get its trickle.
Right. That's correct. You're right.
Is that pretty normal at 57.72?
Yes, yes.
So are we a little bit ahead of the game where we have been in other years?
I'd have to go back and look, just look and see on that, but I think, you know, what money we're going to get basically now is our, before we roll back our local option money, is what's left on there.
Any, on general fund, any other comments?
Probably the revenues. I got one more on court fines. I just, explain to me on court fines, if we budget 150, and we're not at, we've got 65% remaining in four months.
That number is not right.
That's kind of skewed, I mean...
Well, you've collected so far almost 53,000.
Right.
So what's 53,000, 150,000, is that 35,000? Yeah, that would be right there. We've only collected 35,000.
Well, what's the wrong with that? Is this just a backlog in our...
Well, the court fines would be basically traffic violations. And it just, it varies. I mean, we've had years where we've only collected 70,000 dollars in court fines. For the last two or three years, we have increased. So it doesn't mean that we'll collect 150,000, but that was the norm for three or four years.
I got a question while I was doing the general fund. Mr. Police Department, the holiday pay? Yes. Is that a misread?
Yeah, I saw it. In overtime, it's...
It's reverse opposite.
You know, about...
Holiday pay?
Yeah.
All right. We spent 42,000, man, that's probably about right.
Talking about this month here alone.
Of 17,000 in January?
Yeah.
Man, I don't, wouldn't see why we, that's got to be wrong. The only holiday you'd have would have been two holidays in January, New Year's Day and Martin Luther King's Day.
That you may be paying them...
Yeah, that would, that'd be a lot. So we have to check on that.
And now, on miscellaneous revenue, on that 35,900, what's going on with that?
I'll go ahead and tell you.
We're 252% on...
Okay.
35,900, 35,000.
Okay, well, we got 30,000, we got 30,000 from the C funds that goes there. We got 10,000 from retirement that is booked there that we always take, you know, go towards the retirement. We got vehicles that were damaged that we get reimbursed for, like police department or the fire department, anything like that, the insurance reimburses us for that. We got a core for like 3,400 reimbursement on that. So different little things add up to that.
The 30,000 was for the housing?
That's right.
And we still got...
So you're saying there's money left to come in, we just haven't gotten it?
No. Well, we're going to still get some, but you're asking me why we've got such, in the revenue side, is that what you're asking me?
Yeah, on the revenue side.
Right.
We only budgeted 25,000.
Yeah.
And we've collected so far 63,000.
So that's where that money's coming from.
Mm-hmm. That's right.
And then 30-some-odd thousand, we got back from the C funds. That was the resurfacing of East Main Street when we took that alley out. And I think there's probably six or seven more thousand that will be reimbursed for that project that will go there.
Just the C funds, retirement, vehicle reimbursements, and that core, all that comes to 61,991 dollars.
What is core?
All four of our parts.
A mother?
And took the part back.
Any other questions?
I've got a couple of questions.
That's on general fund. We've got, is there other...
Well, it's going deeper into it on city council, but not a revenue.
Spent side?
On the, you know, on your general tort liability, I know we've talked about this before, we budgeted at 200,917, and we've already almost used it all.
That is six months. We pay every six months. So that's paid for the fiscal year.
Yeah, okay. I was just looking through it, and I was just looking at items that were way out, like printing on the next page in finance, why would printing?
Because we had, what we did is we put our lot mowing on the taxes this year. So we, right, demolition and lot mowing that is owed to the city of Dillon that people had not paid, so we went and put it on their tax records, which that was over 4,000 dollars just to do that, to have it printed.
How much liquid we got?
Right now, we had 92,000.
92,000 dollars?
Yeah. Mind you now, that 92, 30,000 is from Hampton, 39, 40,000 was for that building on Hampton. That's where we turn around and actually put lending on the property tax.
I guess the point of downtown coordinator, that's special events downtown, we were at 465% over budget. That's that, across the 14 downtown coordinator.
Were they having events down there, banks and stuff like that?
That's in the middle, that's 14,003,050.
350.
In the middle, special events downtown, we're 465%.
Budget 500, we spent 2,300 so far.
Right. I guess when we did the budget, we didn't have any idea what would be going on, didn't I have a correct answer?
Pretty much.
Now, other things I've noticed, even looking down in each department, it looks like nuts, bolts, hand tools, and so on. Why would we have such an issue on that particular island, way over budget?
That is where...
I mean, 300% forward.
That is where if you have some expenses that does not fit in your other line items, that goes there, it goes there.
That's why I want... That's all I got.
You want else?
I can't do it.
Okay. Water and sewer, our total non-restricted accounts is 1,595,967 dollars. Our restricted account is 1,872,237 dollars, bringing a total of all accounts, 3,468,204 dollars. We are 95,042 dollars more in revenues in 2020 than 2019. Our expenses was 257,443 dollars more in 2020 than in 2019.
Year to date.
Year to date. And what that is, is that's where we have pumps and motors repaired, air raiders and stuff like that, is we get depreciations, where it's going to depreciation over time, we put it in capital purchase, which is 6,100 and 4,300 and 4,400, 6,100. Those come up to that, that's why that is. We've got a vehicle out of there as well. So that's why you've got more expenses there than you did in...
We're going to do a water sewage study?
Yes.
Okay. Any idea when they'll have that?
Well, we're waiting, and I was meant to bring that up in my report. The audit will be presented next month, and once we have the audit presented, we'll then give them that information.
Let me ask you a question, the Wellness Center, I know people have mentioned a minute ago, smell it sometime.
It's not as bad as it was, not that we've eliminated it.
But is there any way we could possibly solve that in the future?
We're working on it as hard as we can for every chemical that we can find to...
I had an investor to call me, who mentioned they would be interested in building upper-scale condos out here, and I think that would really help the Wellness Center.
Yeah, it's a great place.
And if we could solve that, that's the only thing that's going to stop them.
Well, as of right now, since mid-November party, we have captured the problem and haven't totally eliminated it, but I've had no complaints from the Christian school because of the get-in there or the Wellness Center. Now, outside in certain areas at the railroad track on Commerce, certain times of the day or night, as you cross the railroad track, you will smell it. And once you get out of that hole backed up, right now, we seem to have a number of problems.
It is horrific tonight.
Was it? Okay, I had that. Inside?
After you leave the railroad tracks, you open up.
The problem is the time it takes for it to leave the plant to do, get to that lift station, is enough time for that, for the bacteria to break down and release, I think it's ammonia gas that it...
Hydrogen sulfide. Hydrogen sulfide, is it?
So, it's running uphill to there, and then it.
Running downhill to there, but then there's a pump station there.
It's lifted up.
Yeah.
But over the years, we've been trying to figure out this problem. I'm just curious, how much money have we dedicated to this problem? Have we still got this problem, understand?
How, know how much, you know?
Chemicals costs us about a hundred and.
Well, not quite that much, I don't think.
Not us, it costs them.
Yeah.
About a hundred and twenty.
I mean, Purdue's putting in some, Tammy, you here, aren't you?
Yeah.
What, what's Purdue putting in? Chemical-wise?
Well, really nothing. I mean, they, you know, they just trick tricks and discharge. They, um, they have the lime, we increased their pH to seven-point-oh, and that was, I think it's kind of helped a little bit. Their limit was six, or minimum pH, so they had to increase their lime fee, and their pH now, starting December the first, was seven-point-oh. They have to report the.
Well, we've got somebody looking to build some living space out here, I mean, I wish we would really focus on it, because that.
Oh, well, we're focused with that, and that's something we deal with, we deal with on a daily basis, um.
But not for a living space though.
Well, we're gonna try hard.
We're gonna try another chemical, see if it's doing better than what we had, what we just got through running.
Get back with us.
Just trying them.
I mean, we're, we're, we're working and trying everything possible to find out, and, you know, when we've got Purdue online, letting them to understand as well that they may not smell it at their location.
Are they sharing the cost with us on this?
Not on what we're doing, but then again, I guess they are sharing the cost, because it goes towards their rate as well.
Yeah.
You mean, we could get some help on that?
Well, they're helping us from what we're requiring them to do before it leaves them. Which Tammy was talking about, the pre-treatment, where they had to bring their pH up to a different level. So, they having to do some things on their end as well.
Changing by, that Department Forty-three Waste Water Treatment, those capital purchases there, that were two-hundred-and-sixty thousand out, I guess that's a large purchase that we've made, that we haven't covered in that.
In Forty-three?
Yeah, in Forty-three, Department Forty-three. Capital purchases, you had budgeted thirty-five, and were two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand over.
Right.
Guess it's a huge purchase, we're waiting on some extra money to, what's going on?
What is that? That could be some outstanding deals that's sitting out there that haven't been liquidated yet, um, on the expense side, and that's where we've had air-aider motors and stuff like that repaired.
So, you, you're sitting it there until?
Right, right. I don't want it to hit until we actually spend those funds, because it'll be misleading to you. Golf course, the cash account, at thirty-first of January, we had eight-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars in there. We brought in three thousand three hundred and three dollars more in twenty than we did in nineteen. We spent out two thousand fourteen dollars more in twenty than we did in nineteen. We're supposed to get our money by fifteenth of this month. Our two percent funds, we all brought in, there was four-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars more in revenues in nineteen than in twenty. We had a couple that was late coming in, but they had since paid, so that'll make a difference. To date, we have transferred a hundred and five thousand from, to the golf course from the two percent. We have made a payment in January, so now we have five annual payments left, we'll finish it up in twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five.
All right, I'd like to go back to the Wellness Center before we leave this budget. And I want you to explain this to me. I want you to explain me the revenues current year-to-date, and see if I'm looking at this right.
In the Wellness Center revenues?
In the revenues right now.
Okay.
This says eighty-six thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars is the revenues, correct? That we've taken in this year?
Year-to-date.
Year-to-date. All right, you go to the expenses. What does the expenses say?
Two-sixty-five, two-sixty-four.
All right, so I subtract that from my revenues, correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so that's a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, and we got a deficit so far this year. Am I right in saying that?
Yeah, as far as?
As far as what I see right here.
What you got as of right now, we have spent a hundred and seventy-some-odd thousand dollars more than what we sold.
So, what I'm trying to get to is, I understand we're getting things put in place. We've lost more money this year in just five to six months than our budgeting all last year. I understand we're doing things. But this is, Curtis Boyd is making a profit, okay? At this new gym. He's got two-hundred-and-twenty-five members, okay? I want to find a way, a plan, that we can make a profit. We, we're losing fifteen to eighteen thousand dollars a month. We've got to put a plan in place. Because you've gone to two times your deficit this year versus your last year.
Understand. Now, you can't compare apples to apples, what he has and what we have. He has more than one facility. They all in one umbrella as well.
But I'm talking about this facility he's got right here, he's making a profit.
I don't know that. How do you know that?
I know he's making a profit.
How do you?
I don't need to disclose all that, I'm just telling you, he's not losing fifteen to eighteen thousand dollars a month.
Well, I'm not saying, I'm not saying he's losing that either. But, I mean, at the same time, you know, he's got his eight, nine, ten different locations, all in one bank account.
Well, I mean, that's fine, but I'm talking, I mean, I can't.
I understand, I understand.
On this one facility. I'm trying to concentrate on this Wellness Center, that we've lost more money in six months than we have all last year. I understand you got a committee, you put things in place, but how are we gonna get to the point where we show a profit?
I don't know we'll ever get a profit. We've never had in fourteen years.
So, how do you get it where you only lose fifty thousand dollars? You gotta find a goal.
Well, that would be the membership, people to.
You're down, well, sixty members?
You gotta.
You're still down sixty.
Down sixty members, right now. But I went back and looked, oh gracious, uh, two thousand, we opened what, two thousand and seven? Two thousand and seven up to about two thousand and ten, you know, we had eight hundred members. We haven't been that high since two thousand and ten. And not saying we'll ever get further than where we are today. You know, all we can do is offer it to get people to come. But still, it's, it is.
I think with extended hours and a few months, I think we will be back up.
I don't know that extended hours are gonna help that.
It could, it could.
But we also get into.
Especially summer coming up.
We also get into a spot, though, the busiest times are December to, to March. Uh, once the weather heats up, you know, they, they don't like. Yeah, they, they things outside and not come in, but, you know, our, our goal is to make, to break heat. But I don't know that we'll break, ever break heat. I mean, just no different than any other, any other quality of life, issues, recreation, for example. We don't, we lose money there, if you look at it that way.
We want to try to do additional things to the Wellness Center. And the problem I have is when you show more deficit now than you did the whole year of last year. But not only that, I mean, you hadn't even taken the hundred-and-seventy-three thousand dollars we lost last year, out of the hospitality balance we got now, can we say?
We've taken the one prior, but the one that we're working on now, no. We'll take that when we finish our audit.
So, I mean, really and truly, we don't have enough six-hundred thousand dollars in hospitality.
Give or take, give or take.
Yeah, we need to do additional things. I mean, Dr. Wallace has mentioned things that we'd like to see us do in the near future, pay off another mortgage payment. I mean, I just wish we could get a better handle on, you know, what's going on.
Well, I mean, the issue is, is membership-driven. I mean, that's, that's the issue.
Is the Wellness Center, um, independent of the gym?
No.
And independent of all that?
No, all that, all that's under. The only, the only, the only thing that.
You've got an expense there that is not.
Revenue.
Yeah, it's not gonna produce revenue, and, and it's, and, 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 you know, we, we've kind of debated on this, about how we look at that. If, I look at the, the budget of the two percent money in quality of life. And, uh, we want to make as much money as we can out there, but at the same time, it is, well, it's quality of life issues, and if we want people to live in dwell, we gotta have things for them to do, and, you know, and we got a five-point-one-million-dollar investment out there, and it is a beautiful place. We, I, I agree we need to tune it up, get more involvement.
Yeah, that's my thing, I mean, I, I agree with you totally, Wellness Center's a great place for us. I just not, I just don't want to start to lose so much money.
Well, I, I mean, again, it's.
And I understand membership-driven and all that.
Yeah, it's strictly membership.
But it supports, yeah, the, I mean, you got a gym out there, the gym rent.
The gym itself probably uses two-thirds of the overhead.
Yeah.
Just the heat and cool. Well, I mean, we, it costs us roughly eighty thousand dollars a year to.
Heat and cool, cool that itself.
Right. But I would say if it's eighty thousand, it's probably only fifteen or twenty to heat and cool the wellness part itself. Well, it's forty, it's forty thousand square feet, the fitness side is roughly fifteen thousand square feet, so. So, you're looking at less than a third of the, two-thirds of the overhead goes into the gym part that is no, is not revenues-producing, unless we want to start charging.
We do, we do.
And, I mean.
No, I'm talking about like when we use it, or basketball.
Well, let's just think for the.
And we don't want to do that, that's what we're doing.
If you look at the beach facilities, or, I, I go to Charle out of the wild, this room Charle, or Charle. Outside services, like for instance, two tennis courts and some half-court basketball outside, then stand, private to the Wellness Center. To me, I don't know the value of it to build it, but I think you can bring a different, a better-formatted membership for just that product.
You looked at racquetball.
Because it's outdoor.
Yeah.
Now, racquetball's a good thing. That's really a good thing for us. And I like it, I like indoor golf, golf ranges. But I'm just saying from a cost perspective, for something outdoors that kids need to go out and do, like a tennis court, or half-court basketball, not full court, unless you go to short courts, but just half courts, but outdoor facilities, so kids can play outdoors, I think would be a good thing for our membership to broaden it. But it's just a thought.
It is, and, and there's, we're looking now, and I think it could be a double-edged sword, but I'm not sure about, and we've talked about this in the past, we're looking at possibly putting some outdoor fitness equipment around the track. But that's free for use, um, and, and that's a good thing. We have a lot of people that utilize that walking.
Do anything outside.
But I'm afraid also, if, if there's some things out there that may drive people away from actually coming inside and paying a membership.
Yeah.
So, it's.
Tennis courts are different things.
Well, no, tennis courts, I agree.
Half-court basketball, and I think it's pretty cheap to lay them down. I mean, not that cheap, but it is cheaper. And I think we would gain that group interest to be out there.
That's about what the racquetball was.
Yeah, we got.
Yeah, the racquetball outside is great. Yeah, I believe that, and it's, it's awesome.
And again, and, and going back to.
You got handball. Handball's good too.
Population, will, will, how many people will be able to support that? But, maybe not, but.
We got potential. There is.
Oh, there is, absolutely. Well, no, no, that's what I'm saying, is as we see that, then that might be something that's gonna be physical down the road. But, um, well, good discussion, but, um, you know, we, we can do this all.
Again, you know, our goal is, is to make as much money and, and not lose.
Right.
But, you know, I think we all knew going in that this was not gonna be a money maker now. I think when we started this thirteen, fourteen years ago, that we had in mind somewhere between seventy-five and a hundred thousand dollars. But you're correct, we've lost more.
Yeah.
This year than where we are right now, based on revenues.
But your membership is up about sixty, seventy people.
We'll have a, we'll have a big membership drive, if you want to call it, in April, that was our anniversary day. And that's usually when we get a lot of, of those, so we'll kind of play that by here as well, and see what that does for us.
All right.
I'm thirsty.
Glad to be through. All right. Bridget, I know you're out there, and appreciate you not.
Thank you.
Maybe she is. There she is.
Glenn asked him to give y'all an update on the benchmark planning. And, um, on January the twenty-eighth, uh, Benchmark Planet came in for a two-day listening session. The dates on the calendar list, the twenty-eighth and the thirtieth. On the twenty-eighth, that was reserved for the city staff, city council members, uh, city commi, committee members, uh, the bar, and, um, planning committee was invited to participate, and also local and civic and social groups. On the evening of the twenty-eighth, we met with the Dillon Downtown Development Committee, and also the Downtown Development Ambassadors. On the thirtieth, we toured, um, downtown Dillon. I took them to all the new industries, um, that's coming into town, this, they saw the spec buildings, they've, uh, visited Harbor Freight, they visited with Mike at the end of port. Um, just went to other industries so they can incorporate that into the plan. We also rode around the parameter of the active corridors plan, so, as you know, that, um, the Martin Luther King Project that we're in process of is the phase one for the active corridors plan, so I also want them to incorporate that in our downtown master plan. And I rode them around that entire, um, corridor. After we toured all those areas, we went downtown, we were able to get to about half of our downtown businesses. We started right here with, um, Attorney Tim Ammons, and we went down to, uh, McKeller Check Cashing on North McArthur Avenue. So, we would like to, on the next tour, we would like to start at, uh, one hundred and go, one hundred east and go back down to the three hundred east block. Uh, they were able to meet with, uh, Dr. Wallace, met with them at his office. And then, at three-thirty, they were able to take a tour of the agriculture building. And that building, and they also talked with Steve Jackson, who owns that property. And they're very interested in that property, because we want to use that as an anchor for downtown. So, we're trying to come up, they're working with him now, to see what they can come together with, to try to, um, make that property something for downtown. Our next meeting will be on Thursday, February the twenty-seventh. We are gonna host this meeting at the Wellness Center, starting at six P.M. This next workshop is a public forum, so we have put an ad in the paper, so that the public will, uh, feel like they are participating, if they want to come and participate, they're welcome. It'll start at six o'clock, and, uh, what they said they'll be doing at this one is they're gonna give a brief presentation, um, based on the discussions we had at these last two listening sessions, and then they're gonna open it up for group participation from the public as to what they would like to see downtown.
Now, I missed, and I would really like to meet with them. Is that a possibility that I could meet?
They'll be here on the twenty-seventh.
Could, is there any way a councilman can meet them earlier, or do we have to meet them?
You can, you can call, if you want to call, and talk with them one-on-one.
Okay.
You can call.
I need you to get that number.
Okay.
You mentioned on the twenty-seventh, the Wellness Center, I thought that was booked that day.
The gym, the multi-purpose one was booked, but we're gonna be in the smaller one.
Got a question? Yes, I do. We did, so far, I've been listening to all y'all talk about everything outside of the city. The biggest problem that I have being one block away is the flood. You take anyone, one block south over here, and it's flooded. Every time it rains, it's flooded. The whole area down here, South of Third, floods. One block away from the courthouse. It's something that been going on for years. This morning, I asked the gentleman, he said, how many years? How many? At least ten or twelve.
Merk, uh, and, and we're, we're getting to the citizens' report, if we could bring that up during, let, let Bridget.
Yes, sir, we'll, we'll come right back to you, sir. This is exactly right, if you want me to answer the question, there is a problem there, we have identified the problem, and that's something that, you know, we're working with DOT on, trying to get it fixed.
Okay.
There's some pipes, gonna have to be dug up and replaced. We did have that block about a year ago, we have the pipe to do the other half, and once we get that portion done.
You just got cleared with DOT?
And, yes, sir.
It's under the road?
And get it lined up and get it, you know.
Paid after you get it.
Be able to do it. It's actually on the shoulder of the road, but it's, um, it's something we're working to get fixed. I want it fixed just as much as it does, and it's just got a legitimate complaint.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
We're, we're gonna work with. Three years and counting. Three years, and not a thing has been done other than one scoop of sand that they put down there for three years.
Okay, we've, I mean, more has been done than you realize, because we know what the problem is, and we've addressed it, and we're gonna, we're gonna fix it, okay?
Three years, and I've first addressed it.
Bridget, go ahead.
Okay, the last thing I had was, um, the Dillon Downtown Development. Okay, the last thing I have was the Dillon Downtown Development website. That site is, and it's, for right now, it's completed and that should go live tomorrow. So if it's not, it may be live now, I hadn't checked it, but if you wanna know about what's happening downtown, our directory is active, our calendar is active, so any of the businesses that would like to be a part of the directory, you can email me your information and we can plug you in there. I think we have unlimited space on that one, so anybody that wants to be a part of it, we can open it up. It doesn't have to be just downtown, but anybody doing business in the city, I think we can handle that. And that's all I have for right now. Any questions?
Thank you. I get feeling about it.
Okay.
All right. Citizens, Mr. Turner, you, you okay now? I mean, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna get this fixed.
Okay. I know it takes time.
Yeah, and we're, we're gonna probably not be as much of the holdup right now because we got the pipe, we just, we need D O T to give us the go ahead.
Well, the pipe isn't, isn't, is not gonna solve the Navy problem. This is the area of Dillon, floods every time. Right there on the corner around there, we found, or Burtonelle found, a sewer here. It was buried under mud. The reason why that happened is the trucks that go down there to the warehouse cut that corner, pushes all the mud over top of the sewer drain, cogs it up. It was buried under there until they broke the pipe and they discovered it. And I asked them about, why didn't y'all know about it? No one knew about it. And these are things that have been going on, my dollars, three years. And I know Bert because I have complained unwritten to every time it flooded, and the sky can testify, if anybody has done it.
I believe you, I believe you.
So.
Where, I mean, what, what can we give you tonight that'll make you feel better? We depressed it.
New draining system right now. So it'll go there. I was not sure where it did that.
Anybody wanna put up a million dollars for, for a new drain? We're gonna try to fix it, sir. Okay? Anyone else?
Citizens' report.
You got something else?
Yes, about the trash truck, the new trash truck we had.
You don't like our new trash truck?
Uh, it works okay, but I don't think y'all doing an efficient job of doing it. I think, okay, trash, the old trash truck went up and down street twice. I'm gonna say it, went down street once. The new trash truck go up and down street twice. That's a lot of fuel and a lot of wear on the road. This is things that I don't think is very efficient for a new trash truck.
He's actually about an hour and a half faster with the new truck than he is with the old truck.
If I could just piggyback off of, Mr. Turner, we said somebody's a couple of months ago, and my question is, I've had a lot of people call me since the flood, and have y'all tried to turn the garbage can around to see if we got it going the wrong way?
Yeah, see, a lot of people are putting it the wrong way. We tried to put tags on them, give them.
Well, you did, I mean, all the way down my road, dunk it back and leave the lid up. So can we turn, see the other way mechanisms can work?
Now, it's supposed to be turning the wheels towards the house, and the reason that he was doing that was to let people know the can was empty, then all of a sudden, he would know it was empty. But last week, we had a conversation with him, Glenn and I, and we asked him if he could, to put them back down with the lid closed, if he could, and that's what he's working on, trying to slow it down a little bit to get, come down with the lid closed.
Especially on days it looks like it's gonna rain.
But if you turn it the wrong way, it actually will mess the lid up, cause when it dunks to the end, the lid will hit and it'll break the lid off. So that's the problem we have with people turning them the wrong way.
One thing I was gonna suggest that y'all might look into, put it in all, the people put the trash all on one side. The truck can go down once. That would take away the red tails, older streets where I live on it, down here, red tail. If the truck go down there once on each street, don't you think that would save us fuel instead of twice? And all it takes is moving on one side instead of going down and coming down.
It's not a bad idea, some streets we might be able to do that. That's not a bad idea.
The only word is you get the wrong trash.
Yeah. Which, which.
You ask a boy across the street.
That's the problem.
If he had a man, mine won't. That's the problem. I grew up. Some places you could possibly do that.
Some people have, but they.
Your house.
I mean, they, they, they. Roll chicken in the woods.
If you mention mandatory, we can learn how to do it.
Do it one way, one time, and then lead on.
Yeah.
And then we get fixed up. Bert, we'll leave that to you to decide. I don't, I don't know whether we need a decision from the council on that, but, you know, you.
Bert does it all.
It's a good, it's a good idea if you wanna try that or.
We'd try.
I know, you do a good job.
Is there any other citizen that wants to talk?
Recycling.
Oh, my.
I've already handled that problem with you.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you for going in there.
I'd just like to say a couple of things. I know the new budget is coming about, when y'all will be discussing all of that, please, please, I cannot beg enough, try to squeeze some money out of there for matching funds for grants, because the things that you're talking about, the sewer system, I know you want to do across I-95 with some more water expansion, there's grant money available, but you know, you have to have anywhere from ten up to fifty percent of the grant. Most of them run about twenty-five percent, so y'all please do your best when you're scraping out the budget to try to scrape some funds together for the matching grants, cause there's a lot of grant money out there. Then the other thing I wanted to say is, y'all know me, I'm totally in favor of anything to move this town forward. That is like my motto, move this town forward. If we do not get this new alcohol ordinance in place, we will be behind, and our town will suffer in many ways, just not, just by not having the eateries and the alcohol, but as you know, when people go somewhere on a Sunday because they wanna drink and they eat, they not only eat, they shop, they go to a movie, they do other things. That's a lot of money we're losing here, and what you'll see happen is, once we get that in place where we can serve alcohol, you'll see more of the stores staying open, so, you know, cause I can tell y'all, I own two businesses, and I would be dumb to keep one open and not open the other one when my customers are not, they're gonna eat with me and walk right past the other one when it's closed, I'm not gonna do that. So you'll see a lot more commerce coming in from that, so really do what you can, and all of us here that are for it, yeah, Tammy back there, we're, we're all for it. You know, you really need to get the word out to all the citizens that, like Glenn said, we don't all have to partake. We all probably eat in places where, you know, there's alcohol. Partake if you want to and don't if you don't want to. Those of us that own the restaurants are not gonna over serve anybody, cause we're not gonna tolerate that, so it's just gonna be good, good for the county all around.
Thank you. Anyone else? Citizens' report. Okay, old business, we have any old business? Okay, new business, we've got a number of resolutions. Resolution number zero one dash two zero, Piva Insurance.
This is state insurance program that I propose that the city council accept this resolution, so beginning in July of this year, our health insurance will be through the state insurance program instead of us being self-funded as we are today. Projections are that we could save a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars by doing this based on the people that we have on our insurance policy today. If we have that same number of people or the same people, once we go to the state insurance program, we could easily save a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the new budget year.
I think it's, you know, it just, it makes more sense to distribute risk over a larger volume of people, and it's, and that's how they can keep the cost down.
Absolutely.
We're just joining a pool, a larger pool here.
And our, our deductible right now is four grand. With this, it's four hundred and ninety-two dollars. The employees today pay a thousand of that four thousand, the city actually pays the other three thousand. That would save the city just a deductible alone. I have met with most of the employees in the last month. Two weeks ago, give or take, had what I call lunch and learn where employees were invited to eat lunch at the Wellness Center, and then we also talked about the Piva Insurance or the state insurance program, gave them education on it, watched a thirty minute video about it, and letting them know that, as you are aware, right now, city employees spend roughly a hundred and thirty dollars a year to have health insurance. Now, in this, they're gonna have to spend twelve hundred dollars a year, so there is a cost to them, and, and they understand that this will be deducted out of their paycheck on a weekly basis, but also explain to them depending on who signs up, what signs up, how many we have signed up, if there's a savings during the budget process, there may be a possibility that the city can help with some of their costs. There was no guarantees, but, you know, we've gotta get to the point now, whether we stay, go with people or stay how we are, employees are gonna have to pay a portion of their, their insurance. But I think this is better fit for the city and for the city employees, and then for those that, you know, we talked about keeping employees. Probably our biggest turnaround in, in employees is in the police department. Right now, as it sits, if anybody retires with the city, who, by the way, we are part of the state retirement plan, but if they retire from the city, they got to go out and get their own insurance. They can't take the insurance we have today. If we go to this, folks that meet certain qualifications as far as retirement and working for a city for a period of time, they get to take this insurance. However, it is at their cost, but it's a whole lot cheaper than it is going out in the private market for, so, you know, I think overall, it's, it's good for the city and it will be beneficial for the employees down the road.
Get a motion?
I made a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. And Nace?
Can I just, I'll make a comment? For Glenn and Jan to put a lot of work into this, it's been a lot of countless hours, I promise you, but as far as employees that just stay on, it means a lot to them, that they're finishing this program, and I think we'll.
I'm gonna make one more comment. For the longevity employees, I don't know how many you got, but I'm just thankful they can carry something with them after they leave here. They've got something to ball back on now.
We do, and I mean, it's, you, I don't know, ten years ago, we had a program in place for those folks that retired where the city paid their insurance, helped the insurance up till they got to be sixty-five, but then the new gas bill law came in at that time and pretty much said, if you're gonna do this, you've got to put money aside for every employee, whether they've been here one year or thirty-five years, and we couldn't do that. So this, this opportunity leads for them to take the insurance with them, however, they got to pay for it, at least they have it. So it's a good thing.
Now, you can look at the opportunities that we could have by our savings at the end of the year, if we can do a retiree program going forward, and what I mean by that, you can either have funded, partially funded, and obviously, at this point, we have no funding. I think it'd be something we'd really need to.
I think that's something we need to look at and see if it's something that we can afford to do.
Not obligate a budget each year, but a, a good experience, um, funding. I wanna hang it with that. I don't wanna obligate to a quarter of a million dollars a year, and then all of a sudden, everybody gets on, their family on, and we're, we're losing money. Okay. Thank you.
You can do ordinance twenty oh one, twenty oh two, and twenty oh three, if you like, together, they're the same property owners, for annexation on Highway three oh one south and Towne Middle Street.
I make a motion. Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Go ahead, Glenn. I'm glad you took the biblical names out of my vocabulary there.
Annexation twenty dash zero four is the annexation of the Christopher Miller property at nine twenty-three Highway three oh one. This is the old South Carolina Electric and Gas Building, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
I make. Well, I need a motion.
Yes.
I make a motion. Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Nace?
Ordinance twenty dash zero five, this is one I'm very excited about. Annex Quick Trip Corporation property, seventeen hundred block of Highway thirty-four west, that is on Highway thirty-four close to the interstate. Several years ago, we got property owners to agree to let us annex frontage of their property, and this is beginning to pay off, and hopefully, there'll be more to do that.
Make it a motion?
Make a motion, we may annex that property into the city limits of Dillon. Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Nace? Um, you know, the, as we get, now, where's our closest bike station out?
Here off of West Main Street.
Pretty quick, pretty quick.
Ordinance twenty dash zero six, to adopt the two thousand eighteen edition of the International Building Code, Residential Plumbing, Mechanical Fire, Fuel, and Fuel Gas Codes.
Okay, can you explain that a little bit?
Well, it doesn't make sense why it's two thousand eighteen and we're two thousand twenty, but that's the way it always works, but Benny can explain it more to you.
So we're going from sixteen to eighteen?
Fifteen.
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 It's not a yearly thing.
Head short, these are mandatory building codes that are required for every municipality in the state of South Carolina to follow. They are adopted by the South Carolina Building Codes Council from the South Carolina Labor and Licenseing Regulations. They don't give us much choice but to adopt these codes.
Well, I make a motion that we adopt the two thousand eighteen International Building Codes.
All those in favor? Nace? That's a good thing.
The last thing I have on the agenda, and Mr. Don Strickland's here, and Don, I apologize, it took longer than what I anticipated. Don was before council with P D R T A back in November, I believe it was, so Don's got to talk to council more about P D R T A and their request, and if you have any questions of him, he's here to, to answer those questions.
Who's meeting the obligation so far?
We actually have a few new stakeholders, thank y'all for having me back tonight, and I'll try to keep it sweet, short and sweet. So we got our first couple of checks, and everything's progressing right along. There's been a lot of actual, finally, some real requests sent out, actually requesting the funds. So far, we had a lot of meetings, a lot of good conversations. Those are starting to come in now, we've got some banks involved, you know, McLeod is certainly on board, Care South will be on board, the Care First Foundation, got a check from the Long Term Recovery Group. One of the things that we're looking to do is be able, go ahead and identify eight buses that we can bring to Dillon County to be able to help out emergency situations. If you have like the senior, senior living needs to go to a shelter for those low lying areas, we'd be able to go and pick up a group of seniors, take them to a shelter, basically get them into a safe spot, but Harbor Freight, you know, they're, they're pushing forward. Right now, we're roughly at around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Do you need like, do we need?
We needed about two hundred on the local level to do, to do the full blown service. The hundred and fifty actually provides four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, in service, so where we're at right now, we can actually draw down the federal, federal and state funds to be able to match that. So we're headed in the right direction. The goal is to start in April. I think that's realistic, we have two drivers pretty much on board now, but we have two job fairs coming up, we're trying to find a couple more operators from this area to be able to kind of fulfill those roles. I have four buses dedicated to the service, two thirty-two passenger buses and two fourteens right now. The plan with Commerce and D O T is still on the table to be able to help us fund up to a million dollars in assets, so it's just, you know, trying to get all of the stakeholders in place, commitments in place, and being able to start in April, we do have some, you know, Dillon County, their funds will start in July.
They have to go to.
Thirty-six thousand a year for three years. Yes, sir. So that actually starts in July.
They haven't made a payment yet, is what you're saying?
No, sir, they're not, but the other local funders that we have will be enough to bridge the gap from April until July, so we're able to, to get that service rolling, start paying those drivers, start putting the fuel in the bus, pay for the insurance and everything.
Obviously determined to come up with twelve thousand dollars for the city to pay, or you want us?
We have similar things in, in other areas, for instance, like.
Twelve thousand a year?
Yes, sir. It was ten. It was 10 for operation and two for capital, which would be bus stops, bus shelters. Um, this city of Harshville, the city of Bennettsville gave us 10. Uh, the county gave us 30, actually gave us 40 for the first year in the Marty Service in Marlborough County. So it's gonna be a similar amount of service based on hours and miles. That's kind of how we arrived at that, just trying to, um, make sure we have enough. And really, the big thing is having enough stakeholders at the table to be able to make it happen. Um, if we only, right now, we probably have 14 or 15 stakeholders. If we only had 10, we would need, we would need additional funding. But we're trying to kind of spread that so that we can sustain it over the years.
But you said you're about $150,000 short from what you...
No, sir. No, we, we're at 150 now.
Okay, you wanted 200,000.
We needed about 200.
Are you waiting on any other, like McLeod's? I know you said you got...
We're waiting on quite a few.
Quite a few.
Um, so there, there's several out there. There's, there's more $5,000 and $10,000 asks that are out there.
A year or a total over the three years?
It's a year for three, for three-year commitments is what it is, yes, sir. So, um, well, you know, the service itself, whenever it's full-blown, will be roughly $600,000 a year in expenses. And, but by bringing all the stakeholders together, we're able to kind of bridge the gap and, and make that work. You know, again, for those who don't remember, we're looking to bring in, uh, Marion County, Marlborough County, and Florence County to Dillon. And then we're, we're gonna have service, Little Rock, Lata, um, Hamer, um...
Riverdale.
Yes, sir. Riverdale, all these areas, bringing them in to Dillon. Um, it may be different days, like you might not be able to go to Little Rock every day, but they may have service on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. They schedule their appointments and things based on that.
What kind of moves would they, would the, uh, city regional transport authority be doing in the city limits of Dillon? Explain that to me.
So we're looking to have fixed route service within the city. Um, we would, we would basically, along with all the commuter service, service coming in, we would have, uh, routes that, that run downtown, Walmart, um, all the local banks, the CareSouth. Northeastern Tech is a player. Dr. Wagner and I met last week. They, they want to be a player in this as well. Um, so there's, it will be basically our, our service. We may be able to do 30-minute service throughout the city of Dillon. Then everything else that come in will be a feeder route. So I'm talking to the, um, the Greyhound, Southeast Asian Stages folks, and maybe other partners, but we're looking to try to find like an intermodal place to where if the city bus that runs around Dillon can meet the other buses that are coming in from other areas, everybody will be able to transfer to go to different places. We would have people from Dillon that can, that can go to the other places on Southeast Asian Stages and Greyhound as well, if all that comes to...
No fee to the sales. They ride for free?
Yeah, the plan, the certain, last three services we started is fare-free. And I think I share the reason for that is because fare box revenue can't be used to leverage federal funds. And if I can get $2,000, it's worth $10,000 in fare box. And then I gotta have somebody to come repair fare boxes, take, take the change to the bank, and all of that's added expense. So you end up basically spending almost as much as you're taking in fare revenue.
Now, if the city committed this money, what will be the, the time sequence? In 30 minutes, 20 minutes?
It really depends. It depends on how far, you know, on the outs, outside limits of the city we want to get to and how many places we want to target. So, you know, typically, we look at our headways to start out, and then what we find soon as we get into it is they start wanting 30-minute headways. So that if you go to a grocery store and you buy some vanilla ice cream, you have a chance to possibly get home before the ice cream melts. So it turns out, I mean, that's, you think about it, if you're, if you're dependent on transit, you want ice cream, you don't want to have to eat the whole gallon on the way home.
Where would the stops be located? Where would the stops be located?
Uh, all throughout. So that's basically, we, the day one, we're, we're looking to start in the service, but we're, we're taking on-off counts. Every stakeholder is involved as far as businesses. They'll be able to get information to know who's riding the bus, how often they're getting dropped off at their businesses. But we're looking, you know, there's a certain areas we know, Walmart, hospital, the banks are always big, your restaurants, it sounds like we're hopefully going to get some, some more restaurants in Dillon. But all of those are very important stops, and that's where people will go. You're gonna, you're gonna have people coming from the outside communities that come here to spend money downtown, and that's, that's the idea behind it. It is an economic, you know, boost for the city.
Um, what are we gonna get? Go ahead.
I would think that, you know, it's a good thing to do, and we need to look at it, but also think that as part of the budget process to, to determine those things.
Is there a vote tonight?
No, not, not here for a vote.
Move forward on...
But I think the last time we was here, maybe one or two of you were missing, and the next time, when somebody here, so I think it's just something we, we deal with in budget.
I think it's a quality of life thing for, for people. Um, it's, uh, you know, if you don't have a car, or you're elderly, or you can't drive anymore, then, you know, it's not a turn of the corner.
But you said the county committed to paying you first...
$36,000.
First July.
Yes, sir.
And we can, if we decide to do this, we can pay, as Don and I talked about, we can pay them $1,000 a month or give them $12,000, however we want to do it, am I correct?
Yes, sir. The one thing I failed to mention, and I probably should, because it's important, is anytime we bring public transportation to a city with the bus stops and, and shelters and everything, the one thing that we're required by the federal government is to provide something called demand response for ADA eligible folks. So for those that are, that have a wheelchair or a walker, they call today, we schedule a ride for tomorrow. We have to go to their home, we pick them up, we'll take them to their appointment. So we're, Marlborough County...
It's three days now.
Sir?
That's three days now.
Yeah, the private logistic care, they're, it's three days. And then you have a lot of folks that are on the bu, seniors that are on there for three or four hours after their appointment's over. And that's what we try to prevent, to be honest. Uh, we have a lot of dialysis clients using the service in different areas. I know that's the same, be the same issue here. So we're gonna go into, go outside, I mean, it is certainly a, a city of Dillon thing, but the reason that the number looks so big for us is because there's a lot more that's gonna go into it. We're gonna be bringing folks from Lata to Dillon to do those things, and, and, so it's gonna be, it's hard to see it right now, but I can guarantee once it gets started, it, it's gonna speak for itself pretty soon.
So, I mean, it's new business. We don't need to move forward. We're just gonna look at that.
Yeah, that would be something I would think you'd have to do in the budget process.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, all right, council members report.
Yeah, Glenn, I'm gonna go back to the last meeting we had. I asked you about the police department laptop. Did you get the answer from...
No, not as of yet. With 911?
Yeah.
No.
All right. Um, I noticed on Facebook before the meeting, we're not even gonna have the police board?
Yeah, that is March the 10th, chief.
Yes. Okay. Are we gonna have one of our municipal judges come too?
We'll invite them.
I mean, would you ask for one of them to come, invite them? Do you ready to have a crucial vote for the golf course on the lease again? Can you bring us the numbers back next month?
I'm hoping that next month, we will talk about that in the executive session.
Okay.
On, on whether or not we want to renew or not, because we need to go ahead and make that decision here in the next month or two. But what numbers do you want? I'm sorry.
Well, I want you to go back from the time we initiated getting the golf course.
May of 2013.
Right. And also, I'd like for you to, to bring the numbers back for the advertising that we've had to spend to advertise for the golf course. Okay? Um, did we ever hire the labor for the stormwater drainage?
Yes.
Uh-huh. Oh, we getting a new, uh, what's it called again? Not love, but what's the new station company?
QT.
QT, yeah. So I ask you now, um, the lights going down Highway 30.
I met with Duke Energy, and they're waiting to see how much growth goes, because they can't put, I turned in 11 or 12 poles to them to look at back in December or November, but they can't put a light on each one of those poles because it needs a feeder system, whatever that may be. What's there won't, they would have to have wiring for each one of those lights coming from different poles. So they're waiting to see how much more growth is coming, so then they will determine how much more they're gonna build out there. But it is on their map.
Uh-huh. What do we do about trying to get a light and a pole in a residential area?
Just let us know, and we'll look and see. If you got an address, we'll look at it and see. What we try to do, have done in the past, within 150 feet of each other, give or take.
Uh, oh, the condemned building that's behind the American Finance, where are we at with that when getting it tore down? It was condemned at one time.
Where's American Finance?
Right here on the corner.
By the, on Main and Calhoun?
Yep.
That white building?
Yep.
It is condemned. Um, the only way it's gonna come down is the city spends the money to do it. I mean, we can't, we don't have a, we don't have an avenue that actually make the property owners tear it down, other than we tear it down. But again, are we gonna get paid for it? Don't know that we will. In the short, or maybe in the long run, if the building, if the property's ever sold, they don't know that you're gonna sell the property for, and I'm just taking a guess, $40,000.
Did we ever look at what the cost would be to tear it down?
Uh-huh, no, haven't, but I was, or had you? Did you get a cost estimate on that one? One here on Main, the, um, yes, Madison. Did you ever get a cost estimate for that? But I mean, just basing what we spent, roughly 40 on one on Hampton Street. Uh, so it'd probably be somewhere that same ballpark, give or take.
But we're just trying to clean up town.
Well, we are. And if, and I have no problem doing it. If council wants us to go ahead and tear these down and worry about getting paid, reimbursed down the road, I mean, I have no problem whatsoever. But I also think we get too far ahead of our game. You know, you, we just mentioned earlier, $92,000 on, um, tax links that we hadn't been paid. That's what this would be in addition to that.
Jim? I've got some positive feedbacks on the signage. And I really appreciate the signs that have gone up. I've gotten a good many calls, and of course, in my district. And another thing I'd like to talk about, since we're, we're having so much emphasis on Martin Luther King Boulevard, um, I know I've talked about this on eminent domain or area around property. And I think that we strongly need to look at that property and figure out something we can do. If we're gonna have emphasis on Martin Luther King Boulevard, that is gonna be an eyesore to us from now to eternity, either on First Avenue or on that, whichever way you run. So if we can make some headway on that, I'd really appreciate it. Plus, behind Roses, I had a couple of older people that called me, and they told me when they're going to Tokyo in that strip mall on the backside, there's no lighting.
That's private property. We wouldn't put any light there.
No, I'm talking about on the side of the road on Martin Luther King Boulevard.
Okay, on, on their side?
There is no lighting at all. It's so black there, you can't even see. People are literally almost turning into the ditches.
We'll get with Duke and see if they can put something there.
Yeah, if they could just help us out with a new LED right there, I think it'd really solid.
But we have light...
Just on the side.
Up to, up to Carmichael Boulevard going out of town. I don't know that there's anything on either side after passing Carmichael, but we'll look at it.
That's all I have, though.
Uh, even to criminal, my little, my little, uh, problem now with EC Car, not EC Car, but...
Area around.
Area around. If we get something done by now. Far, over that, over here, over here on the Main Street, Benny, how they doing about that up there? They paying the bills? Tearing this building down or what? You feel them up there? They, or they got, they, they don't pay the fines?
Uh, yes, sir. We, um, we had written at least 10 municipal ordinances. Um, at least five of them had pled guilty and paid their fines. Um, we have two that send compliance. Um, one building sold, and we have two pending, uh, repairs.
And you got ones as for jury trial?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And what is it?
Um, that would be a court. I don't know if Jack's got any information on that, the, um, jury trial?
I haven't heard. I'm just kidding.
It's all right. Um, on East Street, Bert, you got a complaint about, or which I went around and looked at it too. Uh, it's a ditch, well, you, you own there with, uh, Maple School, it's a ditch on the left and the right-hand side. Uh, see when we get that ditch on the, if I'm going, if you're going back towards Maple, or going back, uh, coming back around from the, um, jailhouse side to the right side, the water's just standing real bad.
Tell them how the field is on that side?
Yeah. And it, it's, it's real bad up in that area. Uh, it needs to be cleaned out. And the lady at South Ninth, it's 506 South Ninth Avenue. She said that we went around there, it was a hole, and they, somebody, I don't know, somebody ran in the yard or, or something, but they came around there and they was gonna repair the hole, and I went around there and looked at it. They did repair the hole, but she said it didn't never come back and put the dirt back in the hole, so...
So it was when we did it, it started raining. It drives out. I know what you're talking about. Did it come out on a little dirt road right there?
No, no, no. This is a south, this is a 506, uh, Ninth Avenue, and it's, it's gonna have a light fold in behind the, the cable directly, uh, twined around it, and it's gonna be a little spot. The grass hasn't grew back up in it now, but you know how people is, you didn't never come back, they put a pile of dirt out there, they didn't ever come back and put the dirt in the hole.
We'll, we'll look at them all.
And, uh, there's some lighting out at Manning Baptist. I, I, I went by to get the numbers off of the main ones, it's, uh, it's, it's real dark up in that area.
Behind Manning Baptist?
Well, no, on the same, it's on...
Yeah, I, I know what I saw.
All, all those lights is out up in there, uh, spotlights up in there. It's real dark up in that area. So, uh, that, and then the, it's another fold, make a lift on, on, uh, it's dark, and it'd be one up in there where they just tore a house down. Uh, that hole, hit, the light be out on there too, so I'm not sure on that.
Was that something new with last week?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, that's be it, Benny.
All right, I got a question I passed off. How do we write fines to people to fix up the building when the man took $15,000 from the city and didn't have to pay it back? How do we go about that? How do we ask a business owner to fix up the building?
I understand. We, we don't have to. We don't have to. I mean, I mean, I don't know what you want me to say.
I mean, there's no legitimate way you can ask a man to fix the building up when this man never paid us our $15,000 back.
Yeah, that's left to the court to decide again. I don't know what you want me to answer, or how you want me to answer it.
I'm just asking a question.
Well, if they don't meet, if they don't meet standards by our codes, we ask them to do stuff, if they don't do it, then we write them a fine. If they don't meet the timeline to get things done. Now, you're talking about, I think, two different initiatives here, but the one that, I'm assuming you're talking about Jonathan McLeod's building?
Well, I mean...
I'm asking.
You can bring that up too. I mean, he could have fought front of, if you walk in there, you see the same thing when you look up in the sky.
That is correct.
The same thing with Harold Hudson's got the money.
Well, he doesn't own it anymore.
I understand that.
Mitchel owns that.
I understand that. And when he got the money from Miss Mitchell, why did she, you know, why did he give, she give the money back, or he give the money back? Why did he give $75,000 of the money back? That's the question I'm asking. The taxpayers are the ones who are left out in the company.
And I think the last time this was discussed, I believe we asked council, did they want to spend money to go to a legal bank?
So I'm going back to how do we fine these people when we let $15,000 go when nobody even puts...
Take someone who's dead on. Even the court.
$15,000. I tell the judge, there's no way when they took the money from us, I mean, there's no way you can even convince somebody about it.
Again, that's a court decision. I mean, I don't know how to answer your question, other than y'all tell us, don't write people fines. We won't write people...
I'm not writing fines. I'm not writing fines.
I'm asking you, is that what they're not gonna do, quit and write their fines?
No, no. How about the release of the money? Have we, are we gonna change the way we're...